Welcome to the Stillwater City Council Ward Three Candidate Forum. My name is Marguerite Reinberger, and Stillwater Gazette is sponsor of this forum, as well as several others that I will be moderating. The two candidates running in Ward Three are Ed Nelson and Larry Odebrecht. And thank you both for coming. Ward Two and Ward Three candidates have separate forums since they will not ever appear on the ballot together at any ward in Stillwater, and you have some definitely distinct issues. And I thought that was very important to make sure that voters were cleared on that. Both candidates have a one-minute opening and a one-minute closing. The allotted time for responses will average one and a half minutes with me, the moderator, deciding if you need more or less prior to the question being asked. My sister, Mary Ann Reinberger, still, or a model meet I know, is a strict timekeeper, and you heard the word strict, and I'm not kidding. So, let's begin with openings in alphabetical order with Ed Nelson.
Thank you so much, Margo, and thank you to the Stillwater Gazette. My wife, Jackie, my daughter, Sophia, and I feel very blessed every day to live in this extraordinary community, from the people, to the beauty, to the charm, to the history, and to the community. But on that last note about community is why I jumped into this race, because I don't feel that all the time that everybody that lives within our community is part of that community when it comes to the city council and some of those discussions. I am, I work during the day for a nonprofit that does basic human services that are serving the more vulnerable in our community with food and clothing and sheltering. And I'm also a chair of the Human Rights Commission, and my own experiences of growing up Latino has showed me that not every voice is represented at the table, and that's why I decided to run.
Thank you. Larry?
Hi, Larry Odebrecht. I'm a strategy consultant. Wife and I are celebrating 25 years of marriage here in the valley. I got my BA from UCF and an MBA from Hamlin University. Three kids who are ponies and been through the high school. My daughter's a cat from the Chevelle, she's my last one through, and a couple of exchange students. Roles in the city include a council member, planning commissioner, created the Energy Action Team, which is our first new committee in 30 years, Valley Access Board Member, so helped get us over into this spot. I'm a city nominee for Browns Creek Watershed District, and I'm a member of the, I work with FIRE on their retirement fund, and I'm a chamber ambassador. News for you in this, I've been endorsed not only by Gary Creasel, who is the county commissioner, but three additional Ward Three council members as well. And there'll be a post on my website later today about that.
Oh, and that's why you brought the donuts to celebrate.
Yes.
I got it. Okay, I thought, I thought you wanted more time for your answers, and you weren't getting it. Okay, I'll begin the first question with Ed, and you will have the final, the closing, the last closing. As you go out and campaign, what are the top issues you're hearing about from our constituents? Your constituents?
Yes, in Ward Three, that's a great question. What I'm hearing is a concern about not being represented all the time and being thought of. Ward Three is a unique area, and so many, just yesterday, I was with a constituent talking to them and echoed the same kind of thing, that we get so focused on the downtown sometimes and the tourism that they feel like they're forgotten. They feel that when they're going about their daily business and when the council is debating some of these things, that it's all about tourism, it's all about the being premier, which is one of the topics that the city's talked about. And so it's just wanting to make sure that we're bringing back that focus to those people that live outside and away from downtown.
Thank you. Larry?
The vast majority of doors that I hit, I hear from people. I'm really happy to live in Stillwater. Some concerns about PFAS and the water supply. I don't hear underrepresentation. I hear a lot of, you know, there's a lot of tourism downtown. Some of that's us, some of that's the chamber, some of that is frankly the macroeconomic situation where people have taken a look at St. Paul and Minneapolis and said, Stillwater's beautiful, it feels a lot safer, I'm gonna head down there. So I get that piece of it. You know, I hear a lot of that. Some concerns about kind of normal stuff that you hear, street plowing and that kind of thing, major issues. Most folks are worried about the water supply and about the local option sales tax, but other than that, not a ton. Just a lot of like support, and we love living here.
Okay, thank you. Larry, next question. How do you suggest we balance a new development on the western part of Stillwater with the increased demand for new parks and trails?
Yeah, we are, there's two big things coming up for us in that front. One, we're at infill now, right? Our last piece of major development is gonna happen called Sundance Stillwater that we approved last year. So there's two big levers that we have in that space. One, through the planning commission, we're gonna rewrite the entire zoning code from top to bottom. We've already started that work. That'll give us some opportunity to think through that stuff, and I'm pretty proud of the accessible dwelling unit work that we did. And then secondly, oh wow, whole minute left. I can go on.
Not that long.
Okay. Sorry, that blanked my brain for a second. The zoning, oh yeah, and then we have a first-ever full review of all of our parks and trails happening this year, which will give us like literal like 10-year view of how we wanna work our trails in a comprehensive way.
Good. Ed?
Well, yes, with the zoning coming up and a lot of the planning that's gonna about to happen as we get this opportunity to relook at that, it's a great opportunity to really pay attention to how we're looking at our parks, looking at our walkability, looking at our biking. Most of our land is pretty much getting built out, and there isn't much more space, but at least in the planning process, has been real attention and thought about trying to create some of these open spaces, allow for the parks to be there. And I love the way that planning, over the years, has been able to really take that and address it. One of the things that I'd like to also point out is that there's a bill that's before us that's coming up. There's going to be a sales tax that happens with that, but it's gonna also allow us to open up more parks down on our riverfront. And it's issues like this that I think makes us very special here is to have that open space, to have that availability for all our citizens here, and it's one of the things that makes Stillwater really special.
Okay, I am actually gonna jump on that as my next question, that what's gonna appear on the ballot. Explain it and tell us, you feel it's, obviously you feel in favor of it.
I'm very in favor of it. I think it's a wonderful opportunity. What these parks allow is, one, it's gonna add to our beauty. Two, it adds to the open watershed area and even water quality when you have these natural areas that are down along the river, like the old April property, that's nothing but good for the watershed. And again, our community is very special in having these open spaces, and we don't wanna become one of those that, that we, you know, cement everything and we build on everything. So to have this opportunity, to have these lovely parks down there, and it also is great for our citizens just to be able to get out and enjoy, and that's one of the things I love, is the accessibility to that. We get our people down on the river. How fortunate are we to have this? And again, that river's a jewel, it's part of the national park system, and to have, be a gateway city for that is just amazing. So we're really blessed and lucky to have that, and I'm absolutely for that tax.
Thank you. And Larry, it's a half a percent tax, is that right?
That's correct. It's a half percent tax. I agree with a lot of what Ed said. I think the city really showed up on this one. If you look at the pie of how everything's being funded, the pie chart of how everything's been funded, about half of it is money that the city found either from the state or from a very generous donation of a million dollars to support Lumberjack Landing. So the other half is what we're taxing on, and the University of Minnesota thinks a little over half of it is gonna be paid by visitors and tourists. If you're like I am and you're a little frustrated with how parking's working and how some of the tourism has been a little heavy downtown, it's nice to be getting some money out of them. And so about a quarter of the money is gonna come out of that tax. It will expire by state law, it will expire. And I've had a couple of concerns that this is just gonna stick around forever. It can't, we can't legally do that. And city's gonna do a full court press on educating on it at this point.
Larry, next question. With Chestnut Plaza and many trails and parks in the city, Stillwater is becoming quite friendly for cyclists and pedestrians. How can Stillwater best continue to improve safety and the ability to travel by bike and foot while balancing the need for drivers to be able to travel, park, and maneuver?
I love that question, because it brings so many different things into it. I did a lot of work last year with the DNR on our trails, because they are currently the ones that hold the licenses to whether or not we can use them for public events and stuff like that. And the Rotarians, they only do one annual event, and it's a bike trail event type thing. And I pulled in Josiah, I pulled in Corin, I pulled in everybody I could think of to try to get that, and it finally took a resolution from the city to get them to the table. I would like us to work with them closer and to take more hand in that. Speed is a real challenge. E-bikes are limited to 29 miles per hour, but that's on a flat road, and we're in a valley. So I've talked to Public Works, we're gonna get those little stop strips along some parts of the, not stop strips, speed strips on some of the trails, so we can start to track how fast they're going. If you're going 39 miles an hour past some gal with a stroller, that's too fast.
Thank you. Ed?
Well, I love some of the things that we did, especially during COVID, and I think we learned some things there that maybe we could expand more. Chestnut Plaza is an amazing, wonderful thing that we did, and I love that we have that in our city, and I'd love to see more of that. And again, that also adds to the walkability issue that you can have. Again, it's connected to the Brown Creek Trail and from the Gateway Trail. And maybe if we had more areas that we looked at more closing of traffic going through there, had more directional traffic on the state highway and where we still need to, but some of those side areas could be opened up into more outdoor kind of patio settings, keep the traffic off those roads and do more of like we did with Chestnut Plaza. I think that could help create better patterns of movement down there, be welcoming to our visitors, but also allow for our citizens to be able to move and enjoy that as well.
Next question goes to you. Washington County is placing an emergency housing facility within Stillwater. What are your thoughts on how the city can both accommodate the needs of those in the housing facility and address the concerns of nearby residents and businesses who may be concerned about crime rates and property values?
Well, I think the emergency housing shelter is an amazing thing that we did. I think it's even a little late. I wish that the city had jumped on earlier, even when we were looking at other proposals like the hotel and so forth, because we need to be able to accommodate all those citizens that find themselves in temporary need of help. And the location is spectacular. I appreciate that the county stepped up, your feet from the sheriff's office. The residents are going to be protected. It's, this, this whole idea that someone being helpless and homeless, even temporarily, is going to be some crime, you know, someone's gonna come in there and be doing crime and is a terrible asset, these are citizens, these are part of our community, and this is part of the equity issue that's so important to me. We never know when any one of us at any given time will find ourselves in trouble, and we as, as citizens and community members need to be able to be there to help, give one another a helping hand. Just so happens today, one of my heroes is Fred Rogers, and today is National Good Neighbor Day, and I'd just like to leave that thought with a little kindness and a little compassion. It's what I do in my day job, let's be there for everyone.
Thank you. Larry?
Love that. I did support the moratorium when we were looking at putting emergency housing by the hotels over there. Transportation was wrong, facility was wrong, and we did, if you do a drive, drive right along with a cop, you know, he'll tell you, crime went up. Moving it to this place that we did, literally feet from sheriff's office, but also from, you know, county services that people need when they're getting off their, back on their feet, which is the whole goal of emergency housing, is really important. We think we can have the proper bus routing through there. We think it's the right location, kind of in a space that's a little bit contained with some folks in there that can help them get the services they need. I think we ended up on the right space in that one, I'm pretty proud of the work.
Thank you. Larry, how might we better allocate our public safety resources?
I think we do a pretty good job of that today. One of the things we're meeting on on Tuesday is a camera project that the chief's been championing. It's not one that's gonna do facial recognition or anything like that, but help us, you know, imagine you get an Amber Alert and there's a license plate attached to it, right? It'll start to look at license plates and help us figure those things out. One of the things that I think we've done really well this year is the chief has treated downtown as an entertainment district, whether it becomes an entertainment district or not remains to be seen. The police grid, which is on my blog on LarryForStillwater.com, is one of the things I'm proudest of. We have all kinds of new tools that we can do in that space to help the police narrow in problem faces, but also provide carrots that they work with us, we will work with them. And I think it's important to have both of those things together.
Thank you. Ed?
Well, one, I think we've done an extraordinary job under the leadership of Chief Brian Mueller and the police department. This is one of the areas that I don't have much concern. I am every day impressed with how our safety personnel, the fire department, how they show up for our community and what they bring. It's, it's things like they have this, this wonderful social program that the chief brought in about having a social worker embedded with a police officer that can go out and be frontline when you're facing a potential problem or an issue. Instead of putting someone into the system, it allows us to be able to take the human factor into account first. So I really applaud the chief and the department. One of the few areas I am concerned about that's still coming up though is the social district. The social district could potentially, I mean, personally and really candidly out there, I have a lot of concerns. I hope that we approach this thing strategically right. I know it's coming up in front of the council to talk about it more. I've spent time in Anoka because I have family up there, and I've seen some things happening up there that I have a real concern for. And I also love that our community and gender is a very family-centric kind of community, and I'm concerned about what, what this new social district may bring.
Thank you. Ed, next question. The median house price in Stillwater is now nearing $500,000. Pricing out nurses, many nurses, educators, single parents, and the workers needed for the many businesses in Stillwater. How might the city provide more affordable housing for young families and service workers?
We've already talked about, both Larry and I, that this is an amazing opportunity right now with the planning commission and the city relooking at our zoning maps. That's one of the first areas that when you look at how other cities, this is a tough problem. I'm not saying that this isn't easy and we're gonna fix it overnight. And again, I see in my day job, those that are in need of some sort of housing, they're, they're just moments away from potentially being kicked out because they're right on that edge financially and with the economic situation. But looking at our zoning, we have a great opportunity to maybe see where we can have more density. Maybe we can add in some, some affordable housing requirements that would be with the other buildings that, that are moving forward. There's also things that, looking with our state partnerships and our county partnerships, to be able to perhaps come up with, with financial programs that could help those. Maybe there's some sort of assistance for first-time home buyers. I think we need to have everything on the table, work with all our partners, and take advantage of this time that we're looking at the zoning maps.
Thank you. Larry?
Actually disagree a little bit with you, Ed, on that. A lot of what we can do through zoning, we've already done. The accessible dwelling units, which is kind of a dead space above garages and stuff like that, we've, we've created a permit system for a lot of those, which is gonna, you know, pulls a lot of the tools the planning has. A way a lot of veteran homelessness works in the city is couch surfing, so it kinda goes below the scenes. I've got a group of citizens that are interested, and I want to take this on next time, in pulling together some housing options. We get about $150,000 from the state, which isn't a lot, but the city can now, has the Economic Development Authority, and can now buy and sell houses, work with those folks and the school to do trades and, and, you know, framing and stuff like that, to increase the education, increase the housing stock, and to keep costs low so folks like veterans can get housing in the city. That's not something planning can do, that's something that we're gonna have to drive as a council.
Larry, next question. Do you feel we need to increase community input into your council's decision-making?
Yeah, I think we do a decent job of that today. Mayor Ted and I have really been doing a, a large chunk of the communication things that we have at this point. I write a lot for the Gazette, I write a lot for my blog. Ed has seen me chase people out of our chambers before because they have gotten a no from us, and I pull them aside in the hallway and talk to them. A principle of mine and a core value of the city is respect. Folks who come should feel heard. I'm not gonna claim we do that all the time, but we try like hell to do it as much as we can, and we're hiring a communication person next year to help us with that.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Margo, I didn't totally hear the question.
Do you feel we need to increase community input into the council's decision-making?
Absolutely. I mean, part of what being a council member is, is showing up and serving and listening. It's, we need to be able to engage our community, and this is again why I'm running, is I don't think all the voices are being brought to the table when we have these discussions. I don't think we have representation. I don't think we, I think there's members in our community that don't see themselves reflected, and we need to be able to go out there and engage with those people. I love that regardless of what happens, Ward Two is gonna have a woman on the city council, I think that's very important. And I also think that it's important in time that the council have someone of, a person of color to be very transparent, that sits on the council to bring those other voices to make sure we're not leaving anyone behind, and that we bring our community to be the best ideals of what we can be.
Thank you. Broad question, but you can answer it how you want. How should we address the new investment in Lakeview Hospital, new location, with the expected additional city service costs?
Well, I'm very excited about Lakeview. It's one of those that's a program that I think Larry would also agree is, is one of the next things we really have to do for this community. I am one of those that have had to take more, spend more time at Lakeview Hospital than one should have to, and I will say that every time I've been there, I've been so impressed and grateful to the level of services, to the level of empathy and compassion, and I am a big proponent, I've been talking to people, actually both with the Foundation for Lakeview and also those who are on the board for Lakeview, and I am all in. I've even supported What It Takes. Yes, it may have financial increases with that, but we need to be willing, I'm not one of those that thinks we've been taxed too high. I think actually we're on the lower side, even though Minnesota's a highly taxed, our particular areas a little less, and these are the kind of services that make us prosper and grow as a community and need to be there for everyone. So I am all in on the new Lakeview Hospital development.
Larry?
I love Lakeview. I think having good emergency services in the city is one of the baselines that we have. All three of my kids were born in Lakeview. The new campus offers us an opportunity to follow a principle that I hold dear, which is to try to keep our taxes as low as possible. Getting the rates right for our effectively new industrial zone on the north and south side of, so I'm expanding your question a little bit, of Manning is gonna be critically important to us. There are some new storm sewer lines and things like that that we're in constant discussion with Lakeview and with the developer, Mark Lambert, on the north side, who's putting the Hy-Vee in over there. All that's important. 58th Street going through, which is a hot topic in the community is important. Support all that stuff, but we gotta keep our taxes at a reasonable rate.
Thank you. Larry, what is your stance on how best to regulate marijuana in our city?
You know, a lot of my high school teachers would be a little surprised that I'm trying to regulate cannabis inside of the city, but kidding inside, I would not have gone about this the way the state did. I don't think anybody's trying to fight cannabis, but we are allowed to regulate time, place, and manner. Place, I think, needs to be away from Ice Cream Corner downtown. We need, this is a destination location, and I'm talking outside the gummies and things like that. You know, I don't think Stillwater wants to be a center of cannabis for the state, so limited, middle-of-the-box kind of use type stuff. I'm not looking to be super pro-cannabis, I'm not looking to be super anti-cannabis, but the time, place, and manner levers that we have, we should codify and be thoughtful with. And I would love some public input on what we're gonna do on Tuesday to talk about it.
Ed?
Obviously, there's concerns to be had. Some of this is relative to what I already talked about, like even when we have the social district, but I also want to echo what I said a moment ago about our police department, Chief Mueller, the way that we've been looking at this, and the city attorney. I mean, there's been real thoughtfulness and real attention paid to this. There's already been some minor issues as we've been moving forward, but I will say that the city has been on top of that. The city, along with the chief and the city attorney, has been, again, very proactive, very regulatory, making sure that if this will exist here, but how can we make sure that we are protecting the youth, we are protecting those more vulnerable? And so as long as we stay on the same trajectory with those leaders in place, I think we will be okay.
Thank you. You get the next question. Any comments on the PFAS issue, what I call forever chemicals, and I think most people call it forever chemicals?
That's a good name for it.
Yes, well, obviously, it's of huge concern. It's an equity issue for me. I've talked about that from the beginning. Everybody needs to be able to have safe drinking water. However, we end up getting there, that's, that's very important. I will say, one of the issues I was very concerned about is I don't think that the city, and I've been very vocal, was transparent as they could have been coming out with this. I've heard it put off on the Minnesota Health, but to me, unless there was a legal gag order that I'm not aware of, you know, every council person, every city person got to go home that night when they shut off the wall, the wells, and they knew when they were going to their family what the circumstances were, but I don't think they honored the citizens in the same way to bring out information they could. You don't wanna panic, you don't wanna scare, but they still had a right to know basically where we were at. It's gonna be a very expensive proposition, we need to handle it well though, and again, we need to be willing to say that every person gets water, every person has that access, and not ignore. I mean, I remember one of the things that happened in one of the workshops, and even Councilman Odebrecht mentioned that I was very concerned about it because it was a real equity issue, was at one point, one of the firms we hired was talking about having people put in water filtration systems, and again, the councilman mentioned that that's not, that's not gonna be okay with Ed or the, the human rights, because that's an equity issue. Just wanna make sure we're handling it for everyone.
Stop. Sorry, I don't mean to be rude, but we gotta run my tape ship here, as everyone says I do. Larry?
Okay. Yeah, the Minnesota Department of Health turned around to us and said, we have four tests that we need to do across a period of time. We are not sure if this, this test is accurate or not, don't communicate. I'm not as sure as Ed is that the, we made the wrong decision in that space. If we panic folks, and if the scientists and the state folks in charge of this tell us, we're not sure this is a real test, sometimes it's the wrong thing to do, and we shut that well off that day. There's room for criticism inside that space, which is why Mayor Ted's working with the governor, I'm working with League of Minnesota Cities to get better communication plan out to folks. Minor correction, it wasn't one of our engineering firms that suggested we do some filtration. It was a idea that we had to kind of help some folks along the way, maybe there's a way we can do this. It's gonna be incredibly expensive to the community. Our original quote was 10 million per well against 10 wells. We think we have that down to roughly 3.5 million per well, still way more than we have. have. We have 5 million budgeted this year. I think it's an important thing that we do, but I think the city's handled it reasonably well. I'm proud of the fact that we shut that off right away, and I think the work we're doing across the state is gonna be really important for not just us but other cities.
Very good. Last, that was the final question for time, given our time of 30 minutes. So, Larry, let's begin one-minute closing statements.
Yeah, we touched on the emergency, or the entertainment district, so I wanted to hit that. The way I'm gonna make that decision, as long as we have the police grid in place and we have some powers that we can kind of, you know, get the things that we want to out of communities, work with them, and then we're talking about training on Tuesday, mandatory training for all bartenders and servers. I think that's gonna be straightforward. I think the city's in a really good spot right now, and I hear that all the time, right? We like that we live here, we appreciate that we live here. I wanna keep that up, I think that's why I've gotten all the endorsements that I have from folks who've done this job before. I wanna keep working on things like Donate Life City. Stillwater's the very first Donate Life City across the nation. There are now Donate Life States that are following Stillwater in that space. I like to keep things fun and light when possible, and I wanna keep things going in the direction they are. Thank you for the time, and thank you to the Gazette as well.
You're welcome. Ed?
Margot, I wanna thank you again.
You're welcome.
Lovely host.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the Stillwater Gazette, and I'd just like to thank the citizens for those who are tuning in, those who are paying attention. I think this is actually a very important race and in a very important time also for the city of Stillwater. One of my heroes, Paul Wellstone, famously said, "We all do better when we all do better", and that really is the crux of my campaign. I think you've heard a lot of that here today and some of those differences. I really wanna make sure that we as a community are the best that we can be, that we're raising that level and our highest ideals for every single person that lives here, and especially paying attention to those of us that are more vulnerable. So thank you to all of you, and thank you to you.
Thank you. Thank you both, Ed and Larry, for participating. If you have other questions, please contact them directly, because there's no way we could have covered all, even all my questions. Thanks for the talented staff at Valley Access Channels for always helping me get, disseminate this information to the voters. Taylor Kyle, the managing editor of the Stillwater Gazette, will be doing a write-up in the hard copy and online in the very near future. I guess, final thing, as always, thank you for watching and wanting to be informed better and be a, be a better voter when you show up, because I work as an election judge and I can tell the difference. So thanks for joining us.